It's live.
Alright, everybody can sign in. Sign in using the QR code on the screen. We can get started here very shortly. Alrighty, everybody can head everybody uh sign in and uh get settled down. We're about to start. For the folks online, uh we were gonna get started very shortly here. Give us one minute as a few folks are still coming in. Alrighty, everybody, let's get started here. Good evening, everybody. Boy, that was a week. Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Alright, thank you for joining us at our monthly general body meeting. We're gonna begin now. Couple of house rules real quick. For those of us that are here live, the restaurants are in the back corner if you haven't been to the establishment before. First and foremost, let's thank Spokane County for having us here. They opened up their doors again for us to have you in here. Alrighty, my name is Patrick Collins. I am the president of CHNA and we have up here as well, Drew McCharter. Alright, unfortunately both Shannon and Tracy are, well, they're with us. They're just online on the uh on the hybrid portion of it. So, that covers the intro. Let's talk about the previous meeting minutes. Anybody have any motions?
I motion to approve.
Alright, I heard a motion to approve the previous minutes. I want your second. Alright, now we can continue on. Uh for those of you guys that came in a little bit later, uh here is the attendance QR code. Please fill in or please uh use your phone to scan it. I see a few folks looking up at their phones right now, so I'll give you a couple of seconds to go ahead and and join in. Alrighty, looks like everybody has their phones down, so I'm gonna continue on. For those of you guys who are not members, uh please consider becoming a member. It's only twenty-five dollars if you're a resident, hundred dollars if you're a business or um whatnot. Uh there comes a lot of great benefits with this. Uh as you guys are going to be subjected to, there's a lot of information that you share. There's a lot of coordination that happens in the background. And with you joining, this helps keep the program moving, including uh providing food for live events like so. So, please consider joining, becoming a member, twenty-five dollars residence, hundred dollars for a business. Alrighty, start us off. Do we have any of the city departments represented? So APD, I did not see Officer Fuwogun walk in here. I know he said he was not going to, he's gonna sit someone else here. He might be joining in a little later. Let's see here. Do we have anybody from the elected office of our city council members, both Jason Dozier and Byron Ames? No? Alright, that makes that makes it a little bit easier. And then any other city representatives or officials aside from the two presented guests that we have? Alright, well, let's continue on. First up, we have the Urban Regatta. It's gonna be presented by Josh here.
Hey, Patrick, somebody from APD just joined.
Oh, you got the QR code there? Yeah, yeah, that's the one. The manager's been working on that quite a while. Uh once again, Josh and Paul Ryan. You can see all of here. As you can see, we've got the uh, we're uh, this is to put it all uh in a nutshell, basically, obviously, everybody's first question is, what is an Urban Regatta? This has got a joke part that we started off as uh along with our anniversary party or summer party a few times. It's been held different times a year. Uh the story of it is basically a joke. It's what is the Urban Regatta downtown. Obviously, there's no relationship links. So, uh the point was to dress bikes up like boats and race them to the neighborhood, and still use that sounds after ten years of average times of this, and you did it. And everybody had a blast. We've done it for two years right now. Uh I went to the audience back down floor. There's gonna be a lot more information on that. You can sit out and just be best. But uh it was a really good time. And uh basically, it's just a fun, silly way to kind of uh combine like the love of using bikes downtown and arts in the neighborhood. Um I kind of like think of it like as a kind of sort of like matinee parade during the day, if you will. Um but everybody is working so far. And you have uh, we've done about buildings. Uh obviously, what we say this time is we're finding the whole city downtown in Castleberry. Uh but it's just fun to get it together and and do this. I know it's a, it's it's hard to wrap that around, but there's a lot of good pictures and videos on the website to prove that it has never even been done before. I really want this to be, I think Castleberry is in a very crucial form right now. Um I think there's a lot of growth going on. Um just great. It's great for any neighborhood. I think we need uh something, or many things obviously, that is that that holds on to our identity as a neighborhood. Um that shows what kind of community we have out here, uh from small businesses to the people who live down here. Um we're always gonna be city snowplash as that place you park at with the games. We all know that. Um it's always gonna put this as a definitive spot, but I think there's a lot to bring to that whole. And um I think there's a lot that we can do. Uh I know this doesn't actually defend everybody's idea of what uh what you may think Castleberry is, but the point is to make this an event for everybody. This is not a model rocket event. I wanna I wanna hand you that hope for everybody. Yes, it says Model Rocket Presents Urban Regatta there. Um basically, I'm looking to myself as a the founder or first sponsor of the event. But guess we don't want to have to cash for it. We do have several major sponsors already. Um but I wanna take it beyond that and make it something that's not just about us at all, and I don't see it that way. So, I'm trying to do it as many neighborhood businesses as possible as we can. Like I said, it's about showcasing small business and showcasing where we live. Um the event's September thirtieth. It's gonna be from twelve p.m. till about seven. Uh it probably should actually wrap around six, but things always run late. Um there will be, uh everything's not solidified quite yet, um but there will be uh, you know, some uh the artist market, for instance, uh featuring both outside and neighborhood artists. Uh some pop-up events that I know several different businesses around there that are doing. Um there will be raffles. Uh there's a uh scavenger hunt that encourages like bar hopping and business hopping. Um and probably a few things that have yet to be announced. Um or or bottom for that matter. This is our street closure that we're asking for here. We're running from Nelson all the way down to Stonewall. It's the size of both. I'm horrible as far as it always goes, so that way or this way? That way or this way? I think um we will be closed down both sides of the room, no parking from nine A.M. to nine P.M. Uh the license will be fully terminated. Um we'll treat closures uh for alcohol sales. EMTV on hands, APD on hand. Uh I believe there's more important people involved as well. Oh, there's a weird thing on current directory before and after the event. For sure, uh for the parties. I think that's the obvious word. The license key goes. And that's a cloud. Look at your, you know, this this is a nutshell. Like I said, there's much more information on the website, but uh, you know, I'm just here to answer any questions anybody has on impact on the neighborhood once again. I want everybody to get involved in this. If you are a business owner, um and I haven't talked to you yet, I'm probably gonna be coming. Um it's it's a very, we're a front end type, I believe, for progress. We're not gonna leave anybody out by any means, but we're asking, we have any support that we can get. Sponsorship package is on there. Um most of that is geared towards corporate sponsors. Uh you'll see some high numbers on there. Anything on there is flexible. And we honestly, we actually have some 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 big dealers already involved. I can't uh announce it yet, but I was pretty shocked at it and pretty excited about it. So, um we do have some support as far as neighborhood businesses to go. Um I know Bob Leap is on board across the street. I've talked to Kenny at Lantucky, those guys. Uh and a few other people as well. So, like I said, if I haven't talked to you yet, you're in every business, I will be in touch as soon as I can. Uh we just want to get everybody in on it. Uh aside from the street closure, of course, the race will be going on through the neighborhood. And if you put that to the closer than that, I would love to have gotten around to it all the way down here and had a round. We basically have to have the APD officer at each intersection here for the entirety of the actual race time, which we're thinking of probably about three hours total. Could be a little bit short. They are not cheap. It's in uniform APD officers. Uh it's it's honestly one of their larger expenditures. Yeah, so every other intersection we had, and especially the connector, is just, it just costs too much money to do. Um I hope next year we can get it bigger. But for now, that's pretty good. I'm not trying to leave these businesses out. Like I said, if I have every neighborhood business in the neighborhood, I will. I just, we just don't have it in the budget issue. Oh, I didn't go. This is a charity event. Uh we started a separate LLC, Urban Regatta A.T.L., uh which basically, we want the event to um to uh make enough money to sustain itself, uh put some back into the go next year. Uh we are also, we have two charities. Uh we have the Steaks Tours, that Castleberry Athletic Club has been supporting for years. Uh which, come on guys, so glad you deserve your peers. They do a lot of them with these kids in uniforms, get them uh, get them, get them backpacks, Christmas gifts. Uh they've done a lot for them, well, the years. Uh the Steaks Tours is what this is specifically going to. And then Baron Bike Works does a summer time bike program for children where they teach them how to, excuse me, build and prepare bikes and it's another, keep the bikes, which is an awesome program. They are down, uh you did years, you reached, they're down Murphy, like right towards the west bend, about a mile or less. Two very great programs. Uh so that's basically, we want this, we want this to keep going. Um we want to do something, I know everybody, this is a flux. Um this is not flux. Uh where it can grow, who knows? There's 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 really a lot we can do this. This is a, this is a daytime playing event. There's no reason that that lost for two or fifty thousand. There's no reason that we couldn't make this much, much bigger than it already is. So, um that's that's the way we see it growing anyway, and hopefully everybody else uh will will see that vision as well, because we're resisting on that. So, I think that's probably everything. I'm sure there's a million questions. I know we've got a million answers. Anyone ready? Come on, guys. This is too easy.
Alright. So is there any any questions at all? I don't see anybody has any questions. Uh so we did receive a permit request um uh to be notified, or we were notified of a permit request. So, does anybody have anything that they want to motion with that? Motion, pass and support? Alright, we have a second. Alright, let's open this up for any discussions on on it.
I must be right, I did not make that appearance wrong with that. So basically, uh there will be APD within that closure zone throughout the whole race route. It's what we call a rolling enclosure. Uh so it goes along with the race. There basically any intersection to make sure that nobody plows through. That whole, like, same on Peter Street, that route, that traffic's not closed off, the parking's not closed off. Um the APD guys will be along there at several reasonable parts of the time. We've walked into the APD building. Uh to make sure that that, you know, if somebody needs to pull out, that either you can hold that and let the bikes come by. The bikes were moving for about fifty, and I think that's pretty optimistic, but you know, Castleberry can really will. They will be done heats, uh about five bikes apiece. Uh that's ideally, that's a, oh, but a bike bus, sorry. If I get off brand, it's getting, my books, hashtag. They uh, so yeah, so hopefully about five bucks per heat. And uh so no need to, and what gets happening through, somebody raises, this is the next one. So, yeah, but APD has to watch that the entire time. So that's just during the race. Uh and then, of course, we will have guys on site to monitor, you know, normal stuff, uh as far as uh interests is into, although, uh making sure that, you know, there's just a lot of stuff they gotta watch. Making sure everybody plows through the buildings for sure, for instance, I guess. Does that answer your question? Good? Eric?
Yeah, just really quick. Um I understand that your closure itself is on Walker, basically Stonewall to Nelson.
Yes.
And is Haynes open an intersection or not open?
Haynes is not open at intersection. That was the, yeah, it's it's um, it's not, yeah, it's not a open intersection. As the permit is.
Yeah. And again, it's permitted to, I mean, that would be a need for them to take Peters to the other side and walk around there from that side.
I will honestly say, I think the permit is in the states. I would say yes, Haynes is gonna be closed. Uh there are some things that that can be moved around. I personally have uh, I've lived the last quarter and worked my life on it. I don't like doing that. Uh if there's any possible way, even even turn at the flux I'm gonna be here, I don't think it's possible that it was openable. But that being said, we do have a certain stage going in, um depending on whether the city allows us to uh to use theirs, which they have one for their own. Going in that area, so it it is suitable where I can find a suitable spot for that. I wouldn't like to be able to get the traffic through there, just especially for neighbors. Um but as the permit says right now, make sure you move close to to Nelson. Uh but not a little longer to let the open for anybody that lives in the corner there or who wants this traffic. And no loss, they are aware of this one.
So we have a, we have a motion on the floor currently. Uh and I do not see any other, okay, yeah. I do not see any other questions or any other discussions, so let's go ahead and proceed. For everybody who is not in favor, that is not in favor of CHNA to support the Urban Regatta, uh please indicate by raising your hands for those that are us, of those of you that are online and or in the room.
Patrick, where do we um, where do we make that motion online? I don't even see it. I thought there was a thing.
I could barely hear your question. Let me see if I could turn the volume up on here.
Yeah, they they um, the audio has not been great on this. Um no, I was asking the people, for the people who are online, where do we um, where do we do a hand raise or whatever?
Okay, I'll repeat the question that you're asking. So you're asking, how do the people online vote? And currently, we're gonna take advantage of the raise the hand on on Zoom. So for those of you that are not in favor, please raise your hand if you are not in favor.
What day is the regatta again? Because we couldn't hear anything that was said.
Alright, I changed the slide up to show all the information.
Saturday, September thirtieth.
Saturday, September thirtieth. Alright, we need to proceed with this motion. We'll close it up. For all of those that are in favor of CHNA support for the Urban Regatta, please raise your hand at this moment. Alright, motion carries as is. CHNA will provide you a support letter very shortly.
Uh sorry, guys, I just did one more thing. And thank you all here, but I really, like I said, this is uh, it's not just about us. It just, we, it is here and we wanna help push this as much as we can. So please, if you see all the social media stuff coming out, please spread it around as much as you can. We will also, um of course, we ask for volunteers. Uh that being said, we appreciate our volunteers. On August sixth, which is a Sunday, uh I think about three P.M., we're gonna have a volunteer signup party at at Lantucky. Uh and it's basically, we just have to have a bunch with them. Um and I've gotta work out the list of it, but it's gonna be a fun day, so everybody just, um I'll have more emails about it coming, but just uh mark me down how if you'd like to volunteer. I will make sure everybody has one of these fancy T-shirts. It would be much nicer than the one I wrote on myself, uh for the volunteers. It doesn't look that bad. Very, really not very likely. It's a torture, it may not, alright? So, uh yeah, that's it. Um and it'll be a long work every team. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Alrighty. Uh just a quick little announcement. I don't know if you guys have noticed, but uh certain Fridays, they're having events on the bridge here, and C I M and City of Yards wanted me to inform you of them. Uh here are the dates and the um time, location and whatnot. Please take a look at them. Uh they uh, I went to the first one. It was great. They had tons of vendors out there. Let's just go ahead and support them. They're in the neighborhood, alright? Alrighty, couple of APD announcements that were forwarded over to me. Um so APD is having two different events. The first one is a Neighborhood Watch Training, uh which I believe is April twelfth. The first one is a Neighborhood Watch Training, which I believe is April 12th. It's a Saturday, you must pre-register for it. The link is down there at the bottom, and we'll follow up with sequential emails to explain how to sign up for that. As well as, ABD is hosting a hiring event on July 29th. And there is a QR code up there, so for those that want to become part of ABD, please take a look into it. There's a whole bunch of different positions involved. And it's not just sworn officer, you could also do dispatch and whatnot. So it's open for all different positions that they have available. Folks right across the street from us right now are also hiring. EFD, Atlanta Fire Department is hiring. And here is their information. I'll give them about 30 seconds on the screen or so. Alrighty. And then, last but not least, we also have National Night Out. National Night Out is a nationwide celebration of all the safety fun stuff that happens within the city. It's a big gathering. It's gonna be hosted, it's gonna be held Tuesday, August 1st. I think the time is like 5 o'clock or 6 o'clock at night. But there is more information out there. If you want to type in just National Night Out, Atlanta, there's tons of information out there. I've got it on the website as well, so look it over. And again, for those who are joining late, walking in, please sign in. It's super important that we follow up with these records, make sure that we are accounting for everything. So here is a QR code one more time, as I see a few folks raising their phones. So I'll let you all do your business. Alright. So Smokey Stallion just mentioned that they are, they are having, they're having a bar there for next Friday's Friday Vibes. So please go ahead and support them, as they have supported us through this. So, thank you. And then again, if you're not a member, please become a member. These will be up a little later. Being that we're kind of running tight on time, I wanna push through. Alright, next up, we have David. David Mitchell from Atlanta Preservation Center.
That sounds fine. Do you want to, I see, I see Councilmember Dozier, one of his staff members. It's amazing to meet some lusters in the back, so I'm making sure that you get a shout out to her, Big President.
I'll go back to her afterwards.
Thank you. I'm being conscious for everyone in the virtual world. We'll sit down here and try to volume things. So don't think that I'm lazy and don't want to stand up and look at you, but I'm trying to be conscious of all parties. So can everybody hear me alright?
Yeah.
That doesn't sound very exciting. Can everybody hear me alright?
Yeah.
There we go. Alright, it's getting exciting now. Good thing, I'm very excited to see this many people in neighborhood function. Generally, you know, you see a lot of stuff, once you come to the civic opponent of the city of Atlanta, generally that's a good way of killing off a conversation. So I'm excited to see everybody here, even though there is alcohol being served, which is obviously an inducer of some of that civic duty. This all being said, my name is David Yoki Mitchell. I'm the Executive Director of the Atlanta Preservation Center. We're the oldest nonprofit for historic preservation in the city of Atlanta. And I'm excited to tell you, you live in a landmark protected historic district. That means the gulch does not see you as norder. You get to have a little bit of, you will, natural defense and identity and culture that you get to protect and defend through the craft of historic preservation. I'll try to answer some of your questions. I will also stay for the duration of the meeting, so we can be respectful of everybody's time. And I hope everybody can hear me all right. I'm gonna look at you real quick. Diane Barfield, stick your hand up if you can hear me alright. There we go, alright. So, this all being said, we have a thing called Phoenix Flies. How many of you have attended Phoenix Flies? That's not a very good show of hands. How many of you have attended Phoenix Flies? It's the biggest, most altruistic event that takes place in the United States. Challenge me, find it. There's no other place that does three weeks free tours for any citizenry throughout the entire country. We do it for three weeks. We have remarkable partnerships. We had, Dozier's office was a contributing member. And Councilman Dozier actually has used this to date his now wife. So I have a lot of packets of these, the handout, so you can see what we do and what's going on there. Now, with this all being said, I want to really kind of impress upon you the importance of understanding the significance of your landmark district. Atlanta does not, only 25% of our neighborhoods in the city of Atlanta have that kind of protection. Which means that you have the opportunity to engage in zoning, you have the opportunity to ask for certain things, whether it be built, high restrictions and so forth. There's a lot of different things. Also, I'll make sure I call them out right, so you'll forgive me. But I also serve on the Board of Easements Atlanta, and we have four easements, if I can get my hands right here, in your district, which is Swift and Company Lofts, Bottle Works, Deer Lofts, and Gee Lofts. So it's a big deal. So you actually are rather significant, hey, flex it. It's a big deal. I mean, this is the whole thing. Culture, identity, relationships, the whole thing that really gives you a sense of significance and purpose. This is how it comes through in historic preservation. It's a big deal. And y'all are big ballin' on this whole thing. So embrace it. I mean, it's a very important thing, you understand that you are significant. And so often what happens, you're told all the time, you don't matter, or you don't have this, the power of the citizen can't do certain things, or you have this. This transcends it all. Through historic preservation, you have a natural capacity to go and ask why. You're not simply just a taxpayer or a social security member. You are actually a significant contributing member of the cultural identity of the city of Atlanta. And be very clear, when in 2026, when the soccer comes here, they're not gonna be going to fit by jeans. They're gonna be coming over to your community, smoke it out and see what Atlanta is. It's a big deal. You need to embrace this responsibility, be proud of it. And so the thing about it is that I'm a vehicle. I'm happy to use the Atlanta Preservation Center to be your bully, to go in and speak at meetings and do certain things. It costs me nothing. And also too, I'd love to have a membership, because we don't do gaudy things like ad nauseam, social media campaigns, about making you join. It's kind of like we earn it. And so if you come and utilize us, we have a relationship. We're just over in Grant Park, I know that's big cuckoo, I know I cross party lines. And I will say this, whenever I go over into, oh my god, Cabbage Town, I'm always called out saying like, why, you know, you get lost, you know. So I understand that it protects your neighborhoods. However, the big thing about it is that we are a collection of neighborhoods that have identity and have a really cool function. And so I really want to impress upon you, utilize me as a resource, utilizing Atlanta Preservation as your resource. But also too, be proud of the fact of where you live. You live in a great neighborhood. You live in a significant neighborhood. You live in a contributing neighborhood. You live in a place that matters. So often, we talk about all the things like, what is it? And we want to define ourselves. We feel is it because of economics, where someone left out of these conversations? Look around this room. You are the decision makers. You are the things that are gonna influence this. This is no longer an us and them methodology, it's ours. This is our city, this is our identity, this is our culture, and you are the stewards of it. So embrace that. Utilize me as a resource. If you have any questions, let me know. How am I doing? Is that alright?
I didn't have any questions.
Okay, he's got some questions. You. Can you speak up a little bit? I'm trying to be conscious of the people I'm thinking.
Yeah, I said, um, can you expand a little bit about what the Atlanta Preservation Center does? I asked specifically because I'm not sure, if you're not like Grant Park or cheer. But at 154 Walker, there is a tunnel, and they just added a railing into like the front part of their sidewalk. And one, it doesn't buy with like a rest of the area yet at all. And two, it just, you know, aren't there like, whenever you walk through the door, you're like halfway in the street? So I'm not sure if you are the ones that would have, like, commented different things to that area or what.
So the short answer is yes. So one of the things you do, you, and I'm using you metaphorically, you as the citizen have the power to go to the Atlanta Urban Design Commission, because that's where we have the monthly meetings, you can go there and you can test this. The one thing you should need to make sure to follow, and it's the Atlanta Urban Design Commission, they do a thing to put it out, you can pause things, so you could have followed that development, but not to go there. Now that it exists and you have this thing, you can, if you will, ask to expand upon this. I will give you my card, use an email, I'm happy to do things, but to see what can be done. Because you are a landmark district. If this was not a landmark district, it sucks to be you. But guess what? You're a landmark district, so you actually have a recourse and something you can do. And again, if you can't park, if you can't open your car door, these are things that change the significance of the space. So it may not be, you know, it's kind of like a divorce, both sides leaving happy with more than what they thought they were gonna get. But if that thing's sticking out 10 inches, you may get it 5 inches. There may be some of that, there may be an accessibility issue, there may be something that I don't know about, that you're not completely with it. But nonetheless, you have recourse, because you are in a historic district. It's a big deal. How was that?
Yeah, that was nice, thank you.
Alright.
Could you explain a little bit on the difference between the Atlanta Preservation Center, the City of Atlanta's Department of Preservation or Historic Preservation?
Sure.
And also the UUDC or the Urban Design Commission, right? Because those are three different entities. So if you could break down, what are those three different entities and who are you representing?
Sure. I didn't mean to go to death stare while you were talking to me. But the thing about it is, so I am the Atlanta Preservation Center. I'm a 41-year-old nonprofit. You have the Office of City Planning. That has been around since, I think, the late 70s. And so that is basically the Office of Planning, that really encompasses how building permits get and so forth. And then you have the Atlanta Urban Design Commission, which oversees historic preservation and so forth. So again, when I was mentioning the 25% of the neighborhoods are protected by landmark districts, that goes to the AUDC. So that's why they get variance from permits. So I'm sure all of you who've done any building are very familiar with the AUDC, very familiar with variances, very familiar with the permitting process. It's more arduous, because you do live in a historic district. So sometimes that may seem frustrating, but at the same time, it gives you a much greater protection. Now, where I, as the Atlanta Preservation Center come into this thing, we get to serve as a different kind of vehicle. Because we're not substantiated as a division of the government. I, I'm not subsidized by the federal level, the state level, the regional level. We are independent. We are paid for by, we receive our money through grants, fundraising and so forth. We get to belly in the conversations. So to your question about the railing and things, where some people say, we can't do anything about it, or we don't have that, or already passed, whatever it is, we're very comfortable chasing down and asking some questions. Right now, for example, for those of you that have walked around Auburn Avenue, the corner of Auburn and Piedmont, I wrote a very mean, harsh email multiple times about that. If you walk by it, it looks like a little small Chernobyl. We can go after that, and we can write ad nauseam. And I always do a backslash times number. Once people hit number 31, they become very focused on not getting 32, 33 or 34. So it's kind of a thing of stamina, and that's something that we get to do in a different way. So it's kind of like, I'm not, it's great to be invited to this, I'm very pleased to be invited to this. Traditionally though, I'm invited in when people want to get a fistfight. I'm very comfortable with that as well. Yes, sir?
Yes, I have a question. Us being in historic condition, so is there available funding that's possibly assistable? Possibly, you have older buildings here with the, who is deserving upkeep and possible restoration? Is it with that at all? Or is that to be funded, funded projects or helped to buy?
So, yes. So one of the things to do, because you're on the national register as well, you can apply for tax credits. Now, this is not like, for example, you apply something and you get a check. You get a tax deduction of 20%, 25%, depending on certain things. You have capacity to do things to people, get paid, but you have to do the process. So it's kind of like a relationship. You have to commit, and then you get the return upon completion. So you have that. Then you have the easement, which is a whole other thing that's going on. But the biggest thing about all this is that you also too, I think people don't realize this, you're a citizen of the United States. Guess what? You have state level, write your state representatives, write your senators. They have budgets. They have all kinds of things. I will tell you right now, I'm very pleased to tell you, the Senator Warnock's office, after multiple emails from me, I'm part of Warnock's budget, I being the Atlanta Preservation Center, I'm part of Warnock's budget, to do rehabilitation of buildings, emergency stabilization. So you've got to be creative in some of this. But because you are defined as historic, you are defined as significant, that gives you capacity to ask for certain helps and resources. I'll give you a card as well, and I can expand on that as well. But I think the biggest thing about it is, is that being historic and important isn't a burden, it's a real big gift. Who else? Anyone in TV land? What's that? Jer, Jer, can you see? Oh. Speak now, forever hold your peace. I'll stay anyway. I answer questions, but I will tell you this, it's good to be the spooky dookie and to do the things for good people.
Someone asked, do you have any recommendations for contractors, a knowledge rule about maintaining and restoring old brick and mortar? Or should they contact you directly for?
They should contact me directly, and I will give them a whole cuckoo book of people.
Awesome, thank you.
Alright, anybody else? And I love your shirt, not most of you, Pluto. Alright?
Alrighty, thank you, David.
Thank you. And these are all up here, you can give them up, take one.
Alrighty. Next up, for a real brief, quick mention, we have Damesha. She's making her way up here very slowly, but Damesha is representing Councilmember Dozier's office. Let me go back a couple of slides to explain exactly how we are broken on. So as you can see here on the map, we have two different councilmembers. We have Councilmember Byron Amis and Councilmember Jason Dozier. And Damesha is here from Jason Dozier's office.
Hi, everyone. I actually don't really have anything to say over you guys, I just came taking in. I would really love to have you remember, uh, community's BAC member, Councilmember Jason Dozier, which is forensic path of this course. Well, if you have BAC for district three, you can, uh, DJ and I work really well together. So, yeah, I don't have anything, unless there's something I'm supposed to be telling.
You're good.
No. Uh, do you guys have a question?
Alright, thank you, Damesha, so much. It'll be one second here to get reconfigured. Alright. Next up, we have Joy Qualles. She is from Atlanta 311, and also represented PAE as well. And she's gonna explain a little bit about 311 and all the services that 311 provides.
Just stick to 311. Just stick to 311. Yes, please. And you're gonna be speaking here, because it's where the microphone is. Speak here to the speaker.
I'll be able to listen for you the next time.
Oh, you're looking, I'm seeing the volume from somewhere.
Good evening, everyone. I am Director Joy Qualles. I am with the Department of Customer Service, ATL 311. And with me is one of my managers, Casey Wilson. She's a portfolio manager over the Supportive Services team. So, does everybody know what 311 does as a whole? Have, have, who have not called 311 before in the past? Has, if, okay. Oh, you have not called 311? No, okay. Or, or online? So 311 is all city services. So basically, you can contact 311 for, if you miss your residential pickup for trash, if you want to change your water over, or activate new services. If you want to know for code enforcement violations, for ADI, if a traffic sign is not working, that's when you can call 311. You would dial 311 inside the city. And if you're outside the city, you would dial 404-546-031. That's gonna be on the slide as well, for all those services. But what I'm here to talk to you about today is supportive services, something that's kind of pretty new, that a lot of people don't know, called, I mean, 311 Umbrella. But I just wanted to, for anybody who has not used 311 before, you, you would call 311 for all your non-emergency city services. The ATL 311 Supportive Services team. So the Supportive Services team consists individuals by addressing non-emergency concerns related to mental health, challenges, homelessness, substance abuse, extreme poverty, public indecency and other quality of life concerns. The team commits community referrals to the policing alternative in its version initiative, which stands for PADD. Pretty much, so I won't have to read this step by step. Basically, about two years ago, they came to me and said, do you think there's something needed with the city as far as helping the community with homelessness, poverty type issues? We did an assessment, and the answer was, yeah, we definitely need something for that. So pretty much, if someone is out, you're driving out, and you see someone that's having a mental health episode, what does mental health episode mean? Someone is completely nude, walking down the street. There's something mental with that person. That, that's a mental health episode that they're having. Or they're yelling and screaming to themselves. That's a mental health episode. In the past, does anybody know what they would do in the past? If you saw someone, well, what you could do in the past? If you saw someone going down the street? Who could take a guess of what somebody would do? Call 911. And then what happens when you call 911? They what? Yeah, the person would get arrested for public disturbance. So now, what you could do is call 311 instead of calling 911. And we've linked up with an organization called PADD, and PADD will go out within 30 minutes, 30 minutes on the spot from when you call. And they will go and get assistance for that person. Now, a lot of people think, oh, they're gonna take this person off the street and they're gonna leave, you know, take them to get help. If that person refuses help, then there's nothing else that we can do. So we, so you call in and say, hey, this guy is walking down the street and he is making a disturbance, he's having a mental health episode. I don't want to get him arrested, but I think he needs some help. You call 311, they're gonna ask you a series of questions. We're option one on 311. They're gonna ask a series of questions. They're gonna say, what does he look like? What does he have on? Because we want to make sure we go to the correct person. What does he look like? What does he have on? What is he doing? They're gonna ask you a series of identifying questions. PADD comes out and they say, sir, ma'am, can we assist you? Can we provide you some type of services? If they say absolutely not, leave me alone, PADD have to leave him on. Because PADD are not Atlanta. Because P A D are not Atlanta Police Officers. They don't carry any type of, if they say, or if they are, if they're combative or have a weapon, P A D does not get involved. So that's why we ask you a series of questions. "Do you feel like you're in harm? Does that person have a weapon?" If they do, we're going to say, "You're going to have to call nine one one." But if not, P A D will go out. So if they say, "Yes," and they want to have services, P A D will offer them services. And I can give you an example of, I can give you several examples. Let me give you a couple of examples. One time, someone was on a martyr train, on a martyr bus, and she didn't want to get off the martyr bus. She had a goggle, a little plucky. And she, she, you could tell that she was homeless. She even said it, "I don't have anywhere to go. I'm just riding a bus because it was, it was cold. It was really cold at night." And she says, "I don't have anywhere else to go." And she was just talking to herself. She wasn't belligerent, but she was just talking to herself. And so they called us. P A D went out, and P A D said, "What's going on?" She says, "I have nowhere to go. I came from Alabama. I have no family here. I don't know what to do." So P A D said, "Okay, let me, we have a relative number we can call." They called the number of the relatives, and they said, "Hey, if you can get her down here, she can come back to us." She has a, she's bipolar, and she needs assistance. She shouldn't even left. So P A D bought them a bus ticket. They bought a bus ticket on Greyhound, made sure she got on a bus, and sent her to, back to where she was from. It's all kinds of different situations. It could be a substance abuse issue or concern, and they will get them services for that. So whatever the case may be, the main ones that we deal with is disturbance or mental illness, substance abuse, homelessness. It's a lot of different concerns, but if it's dealing with mental illness and a quality of life or homelessness, then you could call us. Can someone, when we first started, we realized, this was during COVID when we started, that we was getting more self-referrals than community referrals. Meaning someone is calling saying, "I am homeless and I need help." Or, "I am on drugs and I need to get help. I want to be off of it." So we do take self-referrals. So it's not always the public that has to call. If you know that you need help, you can always call us as well. And we take several self-referrals for homelessness and everything. Also, I know someone said that they use social media or the website for Three One. With Supportive Services, you have to speak to a live agent. You cannot chat us. You cannot put in a case online. You have to speak to an agent. And the reason is because we act identified factors. And I'm going to give you an example. We received a call before, and a lady was at a park, and she said, "This man is at the park, and he's homeless, and I think he needs assistance. I think he's scary." So P A D goes out, and when they go out, the guy was working out in a park. He just had earbuds on, and he was jamming to his music. So this is why we have to speak with someone, because we want to make sure that we're not going to send anybody out on somebody who's just working out or, so that's why we ask a lot of different questions. And that's why you have to speak to a live agent. Yeah. So something we just started last year, which I'm very proud of, we now start taking E nine one call transfers. So we started with test calling, and we started with public indecency. So currently, well, Pat, previously, if someone was to see someone walking down the street and they didn't have a shirt on or pants on, which happens more than often than you think, they would just call nine one one, and that person can get arrested. Now, if you call nine one one, nine one one has been trained to transfer that call over to Three One One to Supportive Services, and will take that call, and P A D will go out on the spot. They'll go out within, the, the S L A, which stands for service level, is thirty minutes, but P A D is known to go out within like fifteen minutes, depends on the day. But anything after thirty minutes, you know, we get a report, and I haven't seen not one call past thirty minutes. P A D is really good about going out. So we take those calls from A P D. What we're going to do at test calling in next, in September, is panhandling. If someone calls nine one one about somebody's panhandling, they're going to transfer that call, nine one one will transfer it to Three One. We currently take those calls now with Three One. That's like a homelessness call, or an assistance call. But now, if you call nine one one, they'll just transfer that call to us. Now, two rules, though. If it's on private property, P A D cannot go out. If it's a dispute, if somebody's having a mental health episode in their house, that's, that's nine one one. That's not Three One, because it's private property. P A D cannot enter on any private property. Another thing, under the bridges and on the interstate, that's A D I. We can't get involved because that's a hazard, because if it's on the actual expressway, that's, P A D doesn't go. Now, just on the expressway, under a bridge, P A D doesn't go to on the expressway on the bridge, if I correct.
On the expressway.
Yeah, not on the expressway on the bridge.
Or on the road.
Or on going traffic, because it's a safety issue. If someone is in the middle of the road asking for assistance, P A D won't go out because they don't want to have to dart or get distracted. So that would be a nine one one. That would be a more of an emergency issue, because someone involved can get injured. Just for numbers sake, we took fifty-two public indecency calls from E nine one to Three One, August of twenty twenty-three currently, which is a lot, because you guys think about public indecency. I'm sorry, August of twenty twenty-two. To August of twenty twenty-three. Sorry, August of twenty twenty-two to currently, we took fifty-two public indecency calls from E nine one. Alright, so data at a glance. So for twenty twenty-two, which is January of last year to December, we took eighteen hundred and twenty-eight P A D community referrals, which is pretty awesome. That is, community members and self-referrals calling to Three One, and they received assistance, over eighteen hundred. Our top three P A D referrals were basic needs, mental illness, and general information, meaning a lot of people just call and see what we do, because they didn't know anything about it. So that was like our top three. Other organizations, we don't just work with P A D. P A D is the only organization that we work with that actually go out on the spot, but we work with a lot of other organizations. Fulton County Behavior Health, Crisis Line, G Cal, Georgia Crisis Access Line, and United Way of Atlanta. We work with them, and we work with Fulton County Behaviors as well. So of the other quality of life organizations, we lost, we actually lost more cases than we did with P A D. We lost over nineteen hundred cases. And our top three that we used was United Way of Atlanta, Atlanta Police Department, and Team of Care. And the reason why Atlanta Police Department is on there, we get a lot of calls that's really not non-emergency. We've gotten calls where someone said, "My friend is outside, and she has, she's about to kill herself." She says she's about to take a nice little girl. We cannot take those type of calls. That's more of an emergency situation. That's more equipped for the Atlanta Police Department. So that's why we end up having to transfer a lot of calls. We try to educate customers on the type of calls that we take. And welfare. We don't do, we get a lot of calls saying, "Hey, I'm in another state. My mom is not answering the door. I think something might be wrong." We don't do welfare checks, because that's also on private property, but we don't do that. That's more of Atlanta Police Department's will. Something that's new that we will, that, that we started when we did start a program is H M I S. H M I S starts, stands for Homeless Management Information System. So if someone calls and says, "Hey, I'm homeless. I have nowhere to go, and it's twenty degrees tonight. How can I get assistance?" Well, a lot of times with the homeless community, they will take their last dime to get on a bus or a train to go to a homeless shelter, and when they get there, they're full. So what they can do is call into Three One, and we'll reserve a bed for them. We will actually reserve a shelter bed. We're in a system which is called H M I S. We'll go in, we'll have to ask them a series of questions, and then we can reserve a bed. And sometimes we can either get them a martyr card to get there. So that's, that's what H M I S stands for. Not only can we reserve shelter beds, we also do for homeless calls. If someone called in and says, "Hey, I'm homeless and I need assistance," or you guys say, "Hey, this man is taking on a street corner. I know he needs assistance, and he wants help." We can get them, we would have to talk to them directly to get all the information, and we could put them in a system so they can get housing. So they can get split share, their split pad housing, or some type of housing that we put on a list so they can get in. So we, so that's why H M I S. And of that, for last year, we took six hundred and eleven urgent calls, ninety-one housing navigation calls, a hundred and twenty-eight shelter referrals, and three hundred and fifty housing follow-up calls. So that's pretty, a big deal, especially with a lot of people not knowing that we do that. And in twenty twenty-three, and in twenty twenty-three, we took, so this year from January up until now, we took nine hundred and forty-four P A D community responses, fourteen hundred quality of life. And our top three is still pretty much the same, but as you can see, we're already halfway through the year, and we're, we're already reaching where we surpassed last year. So that's pretty, a pretty good thing. These are the different ways you can reach us. You can, you can call, email, or fax. Now, this is for regular Three One, not the Supportive Services part. You can call, you can email us, you can fax us, you can submit it on a mobile app, you can submit it on a website, or we are on all social media handles. If you call, if you contact us on Facebook and say, "Hey, my trash wasn't picked up," we'll respond instantly with a case number. You don't have to call in and wait in line. But remember, for Supportive Services, you have to speak to an agent. This is our social media, um, this is our social media app. You can actually go into our app and submit a request online, and it just shows you different information about what F U you're in, who you're council member. It tells you all that also on our mobile app. And it's also available in Spanish. And our F A Ts. What is our, we're Three One's operation hours. We are Monday through Friday, seven A M to seven P M. And we are available online twenty-four seven, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. And you can, mobile app and social media, same hours. And what happens if I call Three One during office hours? You will have a recording giving you the hours of operation and directing you to, to use other contact methods. Do I have to create an account on a Three One web portal? No. But creating an account makes it easier to check the status on your previous submitted case. And how do I check the status of cases on a web portal that I've submitted? If you do not have an account or submitted a case anonymously, you may type in the case number or location in a search bar on the homepage, but limited information will be displayed. And why do I receive so many case numbers? I don't know who, I see that question a lot. I've submitted a case, and I'm getting a lot of case numbers. The reason why is because every time someone calls in, we have to log it. So even if we have a complaint, our case already in the system, if you call in, we have to track it. So that's why you might see several different case numbers. But in our role is called child cases and parent cases. The main case is the, the parent case. In every case, because we want to track. If one person called in or fifty people called in about the same issue. So that's why you might get another case number, because we're logging it. But the main case number is the one that we will also give you, but that, that's different.
Have y'all shared with nine one one how to do that?
No. Because nine one one doesn't have a game. And if you guys want to, if you want to video on how to do it on the mobile app? Okay. Any questions?
I have another one. So, I mean, seriously, you guys seem to have your day putting together way better than nine one one does. Who, who actually is like answering the calls? Because we've had some districts where like, like you said, where the cops are going to chase some guy by me, and he has, you know, that safe, with guns and cell phones, and I find it, and call the cops. I'm like, "Yeah, go ahead and talk about it. We're not going to lie." So I'm just saying, like, where, because their call center is up in the county somewhere, and I heard everyone talking about, there's their communication. Who's doing, you guys, who's actually answering the calls? And you guys seem to have your communication really set, like, I'm just, I'm very impressed. But who's actually answering the phones?
Or is that one or Three One?
Three One.
Who's agents? We have agents.
Yeah, I mean, they're just for Three One then?
Yeah, they don't work for, they don't work for nine one one. The agents are just for Three One.
Thanks, thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah. You're welcome.
I, I have two questions.
Yes.
One, do you work in connection with A P D at all? Where if you come out to an unhoused person, and they don't want help, but they are being aggressive, do you just dip, or do you?
We contact.
Do you wait until A P D gets there and let them take over the situation and go?
It all depends on what the issue, it all depends on what the issue is.
You're right.
Don't talk loud anyway. Don't talk loud anyway. It all depends on what the concern is. If it's someone panhandling, and they're not aggressive, they would not call nine one one to get involved. But if it's someone that's aggressive, and maybe even has a weapon, then most definitely, they're going to wait until nine one one comes.
Yeah, I ask because I'm, I'm actually the president of this building, and we have like a lot of unhoused folks who hang out around our area, because we have some kind of nice coverage, or at least when it's raining and stuff like that. Yeah, and, and, but, but recently, they've gotten pretty, pretty aggressive with some of the folks that are around. You know, like looking in windows and like, kind of yelling at folks walking in their dogs. And, and so I just, I, look, I, I'm not going to call the police, uh, uh, unhoused person at all. But when I call Three One One, I'm hoping that they're going to get some kind of resolution, even if that unfortunately is, I, I gotta look out for the residents of my building, right? And so if I call them, and they come, and they look, and they say, "Well, they don't want help," and they just leave, it's not a, it's not a, and, and they're not violating that moment. But like, if we report, hey, they're yelling at folks.
So, I, I didn't say this, but P A D makes three attempts. The last thing you call, and P A D comes, and the person says they don't want assistance, P A D is going to make two more attempts, not on that same day, because they're wanting, they're trying to win the person over. So they make three attempts. But if they're aggressive, and they can see that it's moving to a point where police is going to get involved, they will, they will ask for nine one one to come. But that's like the last alternative, because they don't want to. But they will come back again like the very next day. You say, "Okay." Because it might be, you know, they might be on, on something. And so the next day, they might kind of calm down. So P A D does make three attempts.
And I'm going to add one more question there. Two, my second question is, for a building like ours, is, is there any way to label us as, as like a hotspot or something?
Charlie.
Like, you know, emergency response? No, okay, alright. I'm going to take that, the, 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 the laughter as an F.
No, we can't, because everybody wants to make their building a hotspot.
No, it was a dumb question.
No, 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 my question is dumb.
No, no, no. But then my third one was, is there any way to donate? Or, like, how to fund it? Because I love what you're doing. I don't like police harassing unhoused folks. I want them to get the proper treatment. I, I, I mean, obviously, some that have to get dealt with one way, but like some just are on the run times. Is there a way to donate?
Not to, to City of Atlanta, but to P A D directly, you definitely can donate. If you, they have a website, patatlanta.org, and you can go on there, and they even have a donate link on there.
Okay.
And I wanted to ask here about the police involvement. A P D, they are trained. They know about P A D as well. So sometimes, if they are in that situation, then they'll, you know, they know about P A D. Depending on what's going on.
They like each other, y'all?
Yeah, they do all the time. Yeah, they do all the time.
So I'm going to hop in, I'm going to say a few things. Hopefully y'all can hear me online. So, a few things while we're here. So this meeting is really about city services. And one important thing about city services is really to understand how they work and the differences between them. And I say that because a lot of our questions, or a few of our questions that we have online, those are going to be questions that are directly for P A D, or some of these questions are going to be directly for A P D. And y'all can correct me if I'm wrong here. A T L Three One One is essentially the city's customer service department. So when you call, if you have a question or a comment or a concern about a pothole, or if it's about homelessness, or if it's about water, Three One One's job is to really help redirect those calls or inquiries to the right places. And so that's why, let's say, as she said here, there might be an emergency call. Three One One is going to route that to nine one one. And so again, it's important for us to understand, even going back to the preservation, the differences between the different agencies and nonprofits that are in our city. They all do things that are very different, although they are all still connected. But kind of bringing it back to where we are with A T L Three One One, A T L Three One One is the city's Department of Customer Service. So again, if there are any inquiries that you have about the city, how to do something, perhaps where to even go for a permit or to put in an application, you can always reach out to Three One One for those reasons. One thing again that's important to be going back to P A D, and I'm going to ask a few of the questions that we had, if y'all can answer them. But I do want to make the point that if this team here from Three One One isn't able to answer more of those specific questions, that's okay. This meeting is being recorded, so we will take all of those questions that perhaps they are not able to answer, and we will redirect those questions directly to the right agencies, such as the Atlanta Police Department and also P A D. So one of the questions that we have is, can P A D be reached on the weekends? And exactly what services are provided for the unhoused?
So we, so P A D is actually Supportive Services. So they, they work for us, so they have the Three One office hours from Monday through Friday, seven A M to seven P M, also on Saturdays and Sundays. And what services, homelessness, it all depends, I can't specify what services someone would receive, because because each one is different based on their need.
And there was a comment, um, I'll just add. There was a comment that was added and it says that, uh, it would be awesome if the Casper Hill Neighborhood Association and our council members could get a quarterly report out on 311 calls and trends. This would help us work on addressing trends in the neighborhood.
So we send a report. We send a report monthly to all council members, letting them know of every case that, uh, is created by Gr 111. So they can see their report on a monthly basis.
Thank you very much. Any other questions we have here in the audience right here? What we got?
Hey, guys, hold on one second. We got a speaker here.
You're welcome.
Uh, first question is, are off, uh, off-ramps acceptable places? You guys saw Lady Belletta was working at the movie theater. Is that an acceptable place to call or not?
Um.
So the question is, um, are off, hold on one second. The question is, are the off-ramps an acceptable place for Pad to go? To, um, I guess to, to help people that are on off-ramps? Let's say on Prior Street, under one of the ramps, there's an expressway that's there, but it's still a city street, right? Where it's under the ramp. Sorry, the question, the question is, um, can Pad go to, uh, basically underpasses? Let's say there's a city underpass. Yes, there's the expressway that's going across, but there's a city street that's under there. Let's say Prior Street or Central Avenue. Can Pad go to those underpasses? That's the question.
So as long as there's, if the person is, so if the person is, again, um, in the ongoing traffic part of it, then no. But if there's like a median and maybe say that they're on the median or on the side of the road, then possibly they can come out. But it just depends on the person's physical location and they can try to determine whether or not they can come out because they keep concerned. But if they are on the median, they can still come out. Um, or if you say, see someone and they're coming in like one moment, they're in traffic and then by the time you're done with the call, they're on the sidewalk, Pad will still come out today. Because at that point, they move to the sidewalk, at least not a hazard in a, uh, they keep concerned.
Okay, and then my follow-up question is, I actually had a guy that presented, he called up on Main Street. I was kind of like, well, like, it was quiet and then Main Street building at one point, it was full of workers and stuff, and I called 311 and they said, you need to approach him and ask him if you want help. And I didn't go up to him. And they said, he can't come out unless you got to my question. And then I was like, well, I'm not doing that. I just said, what are you going to do?
Because by that time, he was on probably on private property. You said that he was in the building and what?
I called like he was out on Main Street.
Yeah. So when you, when, by the time you hang up, by the time we call, send a referral to Pad, they have to be out of private property or Pad will not come.
He was very good out on the street like five minutes.
But you said that at the end, he was what?
On Main Street.
And you said that he was, you say he went in and he was pulling what?
He didn't do that till after I called. And he was like on the street, on Main Street, just, I didn't feel comfortable around him. And I called for a pick-up. I didn't want to call anybody, I've never done before, but I wanted to try to call 311 to see. And when I called, they said, go ask him if you want help. And I was like, um, that's why I called. I was going to call from the back.
Now, do you know if you press the one option for supportive services?
I told someone after calling 311, I don't know, like, how to go.
Yeah, so sometimes if you don't press the option for supportive services, you'll get someone who takes watershed calls and don't know, uh, you know, they should know the process by reading the transfer as the call. But that's the only thing I can think of because the supportive service agents, they know exactly what, what to do and what to.
That person might want to change to know what to do.
Correct, yeah. Yeah, make sure you press one with supportive services.
Okay.
You're welcome.
And I'll jump in and add to that. So, um, just, I was the secretary of Pad, um, a while ago. So if there are any really crazy or deep questions that anyone has, um, I'll answer them. But one thing for sure, and I'll be very blunt about it. Casper Hill, because of our location, um, we do have, um, just an uptick when it comes to, I'm going to call it, um, unruliness at times. And with that being said, um, one thing that we should probably all have as residents here is just Pad's number directly. I think that 311 is great, right? It's easy to remember.
That won't take them anymore.
Oh, okay, well then, that answers that. Pad will not take those calls anymore and must go through 311.
And that's for tracking.
Okay, just tracking. And that's, I guess, for tracking purposes. But it is to understand that we do have more uptick in our neighborhood. Do call 311 if an incident like that happens. Hang up, call again, obviously. There may have just been a disconnect there. Um, but do, you know, reach out again because as the young lady here said, all of those incidents are tracked. And that's an important note even for those, I'm sorry, for those that are at home and those that are here is, we want to be tracking everything. So I know it seems that sometimes not as important to maybe make that report, rather it's because a dog is somewhere or rather it's 911. But we need those reports because when the city is coming up with plans or, uh, uh, initiatives, they're looking at those reports, they're pulling those numbers. And sure, it's much harder for us to come back as an association and write a letter on the back end for their support. We need the data to support it. So do, make your phone calls, even if it feels sometimes uncomfortable. Do it for the sake of reporting.
And then I'm going to add, if you ever experience that again, always ask for a manager. So Casey Wilson is the manager for the supportive services now. Uh, so I always ask, so they tell you that and you know, okay, that doesn't sound right. Like, why would I have to ask, is there, uh, yeah. Look, this is, this is my manager now for supportive services. Ask for Casey. Ask for, hey, can I speak to the manager? The manager's name is Casey Wilson. Can I speak to the manager? Uh, it's a very small team. It's on like, it's a, it's a team of eight. So it's a very small team. So if you ask for cases by name, they'll know exactly who Casey is. And only ask if you get the wrong address.
I have a less important question, but like, would, did you say miss trash pickups?
Yes.
You don't mean like, obviously your own private, uh, building stuff, but like the cans around the building?
Your own private, if you know that you were supposed to get trash picked up on Tuesday and it didn't come, you can call 311, not the supportive services on, but you can call Gr 111. They have an option for a DPW, which is Department of Public Works. And yet you would call them and say, hey, I have, my trash is supposed to be picked up today and it didn't. Or you can even say, I noticed a building whose trash is overflowing and somebody needs to pick up that trash.
Does it work on volume? If we have like, if I tell all of my residents, you know, like, this one didn't get done?
They're going to get a lot of case numbers. You're just going to get a lot of different case numbers and they're going to be like, you put your cases. Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
So my question, I know you're down after hours or seven weekends. What, what is the best advice when, does it happen all of those times? Or it's either late night or it's on a weekend? Is it call 911 or, you know?
It all depends on the circumstance. So when you call 911, I'll, after.
And the, the question is, uh, what happens outside of the hours that the Department of Customer Service or 311 is open? What's the recommendation for what to do during those off times?
And you're talking about more solely like supportive services? So when you call in, if you was to call after hours for supportive services, I have a menu of options that if you get. One of them is United Way, um, calling two-on-one in your area. Um, and they can provide some type of assistance, but that's usually for the actual individual call. Um, I would say. Yeah, it depends on the concern, but I would say 911. Because of the fact, 911 still has a team, they have a whole team. They still have a team that can work with individuals. So you can say 911. And I would specify, like, I, you know, I'm not trying to have this person go to jail, but if you can provide any type of assistance. Because Pad does work with 911 on a week, on some weekends directly. You still can't call Pad directly, but if you call 911 and ask, hey, and you have somebody from Pad that can send out, they may, they may be able to or have another choice to send out.
We're going to have to keep it a constant on the agenda. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
I know it's a lot of questions, but, um, the reason why I invited both Casey Joy as well as David here is because as CHNA, as the president, we receive a lot of questions about how to act and how to do certain things and how to get things followed through. Uh, and they are some of the resources that we use in reference to help out in a situation. So, uh, please feel free to reach out to them. Uh, they are very available, uh, and they are hanging out here to answer some questions after this. But we're going to keep the show rolling. All right, let's go forward with the committee report outs. Again, I'm going to repeat myself for the fourth time so far. For those of you that are, have joined us late, please sign in. Uh, it's super, super important to do so. See if I see anybody with their phone up. I see a couple of folks up there. Quick little second. And I'll have this up at the end if you don't capture this. Um, as far as the treasurer's report, um, we're holding steady right around sixty-six and a half thousand dollars in the main checking account with almost a thousand in our savings, as well as just under twenty thousand in the, uh, Arthur and Blank, um, Family Foundation there. Um, we are working on a budget towards the end of the year. Uh, we just need to come to an agreement on the executive council. But again, we'll have something for you guys by the next meeting. And if not, stay tuned online as well because it might be posted online prior to the next meeting for review for your, for you guys. All right, next up, we're going to talk about the eight areas of focus in the organization. Economic development. We actually have a supermarket that's not far away. Yes, can you believe that? There is a new Publix in Summer Hill. And you can see us in the background as well. Yes. I know this is, uh, for your Kroger fans, I know it's not, uh, it's not pleasing. But, uh, we do have a supermarket that's relatively close by. So we are semi no longer a food desert. Um, and please help spread the word. I mean, as a business that just starts off, it's going to be a little tough, uh, for them to get started. Go ahead, uh, we need to do this, right? So. Yep, I'll leave this up for one second. I see a few folks taking pictures. Yes, ma'am. Absolutely. I would write to corporate for that one. I don't know.
Topographics?
Yep.
Yeah?
It's Summer Hill, right?
At Summer Hill.
Summer Hill.
Field two. All right. Planning committee updates. Uh, we have planned the safety seminar. Uh, for those of you that are not aware, a few months ago, we had approved, uh, budget spending for, uh, the safety seminar. It's going to be held on Saturday, October seventh at eleven AM to two thirty PM. And the topics that we will cover will be first aid and medical, so first triage, situational awareness, decisional drills, and de-escalation techniques. We please invite every buddy from the neighborhood. Uh, the more of us that are trained to, on how to respond to certain situations, we've all witnessed one thing or another here in this neighborhood. Um, but the faster that we can respond to it and help out and assist, it could potentially either save a life or, um, help from further injury. Way in the back. There will be some level of first aid. So that will include CPR as well as like, um, uh, Hamlet and, yeah, it will include all, all levels of that. That's the one over here? Okay. All right, moving on. Film. I know we don't have much for film. Carrie shaking her head over there. Hey, guys, please, uh, yield the floor to Carrie for a quick second.
For those of you asking wanting to support your writers and actors, the website has been updated under the what's filming section to list the resources for both WGA and SAG-AFTRA on how you can support the strike. They're actually at IOTC right now on the picket line, uh, which is down by the airport. And they post that and that's interest, but it is huge film community here. Not just the people who come here to film, the people here. I can point you all out because I see a lot of, um, they live here. And they don't have jobs. And they come for a little while. So some find other, other positions, but please support it. Find ways to turn off your streaming services if you can. I know it sounds really harsh to try to do that, but there are ways you can support this, try and make this mint. Um, but there's very little in the insiders. So, um, yeah, just, the links are on there on, uh, it's casperhill.org. I'm just going.
There, yeah, we can, if we go to that link, it's a donation link. I do.
No, it's basically a link to both the WGA website and the SAG-AFTRA website. They're both constantly updated on how you can support, not just financially, but if you're interested in staying on the picket line, if you're interested in other ways of supporting, not necessarily financial, they need it, so.
Okay, for those of you that are online right now, what Carrie had said, and I need to repeat. One second here, fast, order. So what Carrie had said is, uh, both, uh, WGA and SAG are on strike right now. If you go to the website, casperhill.org slash film, I believe, or if you click on the film links, um, you'll see how you can support their efforts to, uh, reinstate the filming. As you guys are aware, a lot of folks here in the neighborhood are employed by the filming community. And, uh, we need to do everything to get that back because they were a major part of our community and they are impacting us here. So, uh, please visit the website for further information. Land use, I don't believe there's any updates for land use. I'm dreaming about to yield the mic over to you for a quick second. All right, safety and security. Um, again, I had mentioned about the safety and security or the, um, safety seminar that's happening in October. Transportation. We're going to skip over transportation. Uh, neighborhood relations, we don't have anything, uh, updated for neighborhood relations right now. Utilities and infrastructure, skipping over that as well. Housing and construction. And here's our meeting schedule. This is probably the most important, uh, screen that we have up here. Please get involved if you can. There's a lot of work that happens in the background of all of this. Um, you know, as you guys have probably seen for the past hour and a half or so, um, we went through quite a few slides that have a lot of information on there. And even if you pull up just a little tip, a tiny bit of it, it's still a lot of information. We try to riddle down for you guys once a month here. All right, do we have any other questions or concerns? Do I have any motions? One motion that's left. Motion to adjourn? I heard a motion to a close, yeah, that's supposed to stop. Do I, do I hear a second? All right, absolutely. Thank you all for joining us, thank you all online, thank you all here.